All right, good evening and welcome to the Douglas Planning Board Meeting of February 26, 2025. This meeting is being recorded and broadcasted by Local Access Program with remote participation available as provided on our agenda. Is there anyone here recording tonight's meeting? Seeing as none, I hereby call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Members in attendance are Royal College Jacob Schulzberg here.
Mike Schlesman here.
Mike DeRoe here.
Mitch Preston.
Get out of here.
Mike Greco here.
Mike Zocker here.
And Aaron Socrat and Artis Marks are excused. First items, A and R is 42 Mumford Street, possible votes, Mr. Beck. Just coming up and just give a quick rundown of what you're going on over there.
Yeah.
Steve, how are you?
Good.
Good, I know you're just naming addresses for the area, please.
47 Mumford Street, that was right across the street from the house lot.
Yep. Just what do you have going on?
We're, yeah, 52 eight years there and we're making into house lots.
Okay.
That one's two and a half acres roughly. One house lot before it has already been sold and the wall has already been put in. This one here hopefully will be sold soon.
Okay.
It's been in the state since, let's see, 2018, my mother got sold. And we've been working on it since.
Ms. Benoit?
Oh, the same AR, in accordance with all of our A and R requirements, the key things that I have done, just we're adding additional signature lines, so we have signatures and adding the remaining acres to the parent parcel. Other than that, just as long as you've got a public way.
Okay, board, any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing as none, all of the team, the motion to endorse the A and R for 42 Mumford Street.
So moved.
Well, the motion made by Mrs. Wickers, second to Mr. Greco, any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any others?
Thank you.
We'll get those signed, stop by tomorrow.
Cool.
Thanks, Ken.
Thanks, Ken.
Second, A and R, 173 West Street, possible votes.
Gentlemen, just name and addresses for the program to the taker.
Sure.
Or affiliation.
Rob Knappich from Allen Engineering, with me is the side of Joe Birch.
Side Birch.
Make sure they're not close enough to the mic.
They need to hear closer?
Yeah. Hear them on the mic.
But it works.
Thank you. Once again.
It's not working.
Yeah, turn it off.
That's probably what it was.
Yeah.
You can probably put it down now at this point.
Can you hear me?
Uh, yeah, I mean, that one's not tall. Just bring it closer, that's fine.
Okay.
We're talking a lot.
All right. Once again, Rob Knappich from Allen Engineering, with me is Joe Birch. And as you see, this is an approval, not required plan. This plan divides the property situated at 173 West Street, owned by Andrew F. Payne and Jonathan R. Payne, into a parcel A of approximately, well, of four acres and the remaining area of the Payne property, which is 11.93 acres. The purpose of this plan, as we indicate in a note, note number five, is to create this lot and so that it can be conveyed to Mr. Birch. Mr. Birch has entered into an agreement with the Paines pursuant to which, upon endorsement of this plan, he'll acquire parcel A. So that's really the limited purpose of it. I do believe it meets your checklist, your requirements, so we respectfully ask that you endorse it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Benoit?
Yeah, I agree with everything the counselor says. This is on a conforming law, a public road, giving back lands to a conforming parcel. There's no creation of non-conformers on the parent parcel. This meets all of our requirements.
Okay. Board, any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing as none, all of the team, a motion to endorse the A and R for 173 West Street.
So moved.
Second.
Name of Mrs. Wickers and of Miss Schlesman, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any others?
My lawyers.
After tonight, no sir.
Tomorrow morning?
Yes. Saturday, tonight. I'll be right back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to continue the public hearing, but we're going to take that after. We're going to do additional business. Zone by law update, multifamily dwellings, possible votes, Mr. Fraser.
Mr. Ford, can Fraser be the inspector?
Um, yeah, it's a multifamily.
Well, certainly we don't have anything in the zoning bylaws allowing multifamily use without going to a planning board. And in that, I believe the only place it's really allowed is VB, not VR and RA. So this was to just try and incorporate allowance through, still through the planning board, but in two zones, either VR and VB.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. So currently, we don't have multifamily dwelling definition anywhere around that. So when someone comes forth with a multifamily application, where do, how do they typically get, where do they typically go?
So they have to come in, they get denied for the multifamily use, which is not allowed, and then they jump onto the planning board.
Go with the ZDA?
No.
What do you mean that?
Well, they don't go anywhere right now because it's on the tables, right?
Right. Now, when we say multifamily, how many family we talk?
Just one to three.
Okay, because that should have been put in there. We're not just multifamily, there's no description of what it is.
This wouldn't be a bad idea.
So that, so that there's no confusion when coming in, we're not going multifamily, 20.
Well, typically, so multifamily, the definition would be R3 use.
Okay.
So then you get four more, turns into an R.
Okay. But that way, that leaves a lot of people to deal with.
Can you just, what was it, R what use? One to three.
Yep.
Is an R3 use, residential dwelling.
Okay.
Four and above is an R2, steps into, for lack of another word, more of a commercial dwelling.
Okay.
So Ken, should we, sorry, the chair, should we remove two-family dwelling or what's the difference?
Well, your two-family dwelling can be townhouse on any other, any of those. When you get into multifamilies, you're going to get, you get a lot of the older homes downtown that people are buying, and maybe they're two-family now, and they say, well, you know, if I need to put a egress out on the third floor, I can get another apartment like that.
Okay.
To the chair, it almost feels like the three-deck zone was.
Right.
You're allowing that third floor.
Right, it'd be in the same place.
Yeah. I know the town wouldn't want triple deckers, but. Well, an example of what's going on is the house right on Depot Street. Now, that's only a two-family, but that's a single-family residence. So we put in a, through the planning board to make it a two-family. I haven't had anybody in the four years I've been here come in asking for private three-family. I have had them asking for six, seven, and eight families, but not three.
With this new ADU law, does this transfer those into multifamily dwellings?
Yeah.
If you have a two-family and you add an ADU, does that become a three-family?
Oh.
Which is a question, I'm not sure. So it's talking to the town, I've heard about these, since these kind of just came up, just kind of thinking that we should digest this a little bit, maybe put this onto the ball, might be a good idea. I don't know if we're going to anticipate any comments from the Attorney General, back from the ADU, that might end up on the ball as well, might be a good idea to take these both of these.
Yeah. What's the red asterisk on the PB for two-family? Is there a change in that?
I'm crossing that off because that didn't have a reference point anywhere else in the bylaws.
Okay.
It was just there and there was no asterisk lower in the bylaws, it's not affecting that.
Oh, the asterisk was there.
Yeah, so that's just removing.
Yeah, I looked through there, no, there's no random reason for it.
So there is an asterisk there.
Yeah.
It doesn't reference that.
It's a typo.
All right, it's to be crossed up somewhere.
But you're just removing the asterisk, not the PB.
Right.
Okay.
So we've got another, a little caveat to this ADU law that's coming, that's in effect now. What he's saying, they could take a two-family, now, by right, even a two-family, they're allowed, if they follow the guidelines for straightforwardness and everything, an ADU, that effectively becomes a three-family. That doesn't mean that you automatically get it, because now they've got to follow the building code. Three-family and above, you have sprinklers. So there's a lot of other things in it, but this would just be more of a way to kind of cover it a little bit and put that one outside. What's allowed for this?
Is there a pressing issue that we shouldn't take this up?
I don't have any application on any three families. I do know that the same E laws enacted as of February 5th.
Okay.
I haven't had a lot of interest in it yet, but I do anticipate that it's going to, it'll snowball once it gets its.
Once it gets drawn and pretty early now, what's going on?
Yeah, if there is a pressing issue, I'd say try to tackle it, but if we do some more research, ADU and.
Yeah, we also need to add a definition.
Yeah.
And then difference actually. The thing is, is like, even if we were to vote on this, like, if we had voted on it today, sent the select board, the select board sent it back to us, we had a simple public hearing. Hopefully we have that kind of time.
Yeah.
But, so unless we're okay with the passes, that, I don't know. We should need to add a definition, there's a lot of discussion to be had.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's certainly good to start the ball, and that's because it's something important.
Yeah, for sure. True, the chair, the thing, provided you do it, like, get it all said, done, and have it done early, that way, at least if something comes up, we can say, hey, this is what we're planning on, instead of having absolutely nothing. We should have it all set, printed it all, homing out, in case something does come up, at least, it'll be on the record. And all the way public hearing has been held in evidence. Put in more teeth to the matter than have it, there's nothing that works.
Well, as the building commissioner, my concern with this whole thing, maybe in a time manner, time fashion, is the fact that if something comes in front of, in front of me right now for an ADU, and it's potentially going to make a three-family in town, I have nothing that can stop that. I don't have any guidance, other than, you know, my building code, which is pretty frequent, they're making three families. But it starts anything else, there's nothing there, so there's no guidance for it.
We did our one by law passive town meetings, we've been sitting in the AG's queue, and they get us, and we're expecting something edits since the regulation came out, late January, after we had already passed this. So we're expecting some sort of modification, just to give them those, that, now I think we're going to give them.
I just had another modification to the law. They're still refining the law. I was in a meeting Tuesday, they're still refining the ADU law.
Yeah, they pushed it out way too fast before research, man.
But they just started bringing in the aspects of the building community and everything else. I mean, they did bring it up. I get the concept to try and get some affordable housing, whether it's affordable or not, that's to be seen. They pushed everything up without getting guidance from anybody, it was just a law that was pushed out, basically a generic law to get something on their books. And they've been refining, as it's been going, and they fully enacted it February 5th, but it's, I still don't really know what they enacted, because they're still changing the law. It's still rewriting, they still have so many unanswered questions.
How would we classify, classify a two-family existing that wanted to put a separate ADU?
It still becomes a three-family if it's on the same law.
It does, so then, does.
That is another one of the questions that legally, the state is going back and forth because they say, well, if I put another building on the law for another unit, is it truly a free family if it's not attached to a building?
Yeah.
But if you're on a residential law and you have three dwellings, what is?
Three families are there.
Right, so it's, these are all the things they didn't answer.
So at this point, it doesn't matter if it's building out and in an existing building or adding a separate one. We haven't defined that.
I mean, we're still peeling through the existing in-law apartment, you know, and stuff. It's not just easily, okay, it's automatic, it's, there's a lot to it.
Did you say that three families and above require sprinklers as well?
So if you're converting a two-family to a three-family, a three-family building and above, either if it's a certain percentage of rehab, if it's a new building, or if it's an added-on unit, would require sprinklers as well.
Is that a recent law, recent change?
Uh, well, it is now.
Okay, so you must have a lot of grandfather properties in town, don't mean that requirement.
Well, yeah, I mean, prior to that law, you could, I think it was six families above using sprinklers. But when they came through in 83, 84, and changed the sprinkler codes with the fire department, the fire department is actually still today trying to push sprinklers in single-family residential. A lot of the country has that, they're still trying to push, there's been a pushback against that. So, I want to say it was 81 to 86, the fire department through 527 CMR, they had guidance that said that, within a year, I believe it was, don't want to be exact, but I believe it was within a year of the enactment of the law, you had to have a full alarm system in, or at least you had to have hardware smoke detectors. Then on the sale of any building that's three-family and above, before it could be sold, has to have a smoke alarm in. And I believe it's six-family above, has to have an alarm system, not just smoke detectors. If you rehab, I mean, but if you use a most, if you take a three-family existing and you do an operation to it, that becomes a level three operation to it, you're going to be sprinkling the building. So that's a major demo rehab. If you're doing a level one or level two, level two is questionable, if you start changing the egresses, then you could be triggered sprinkler. But a level one is considered a minor rehab, you wouldn't have to do these sprinklers.
I agree. The biggest pushback is, you have an oil-fired furnace, now you have a sprinkler system, what are you supposed to do? Put water on an oil fire? And that's the biggest problem that can happen. Oil fires, now you're putting water on it, now the fire sprits, 100%.
They did have, they did have a little guidance that came out for about three years through the fire department to put a sprinkler over any, any fossil fuel.
Correct, I know. I, because Auburn had it, and the pushback, they were making them disconnect them above anything to oil fire because of that. You put water on an oil fire. That's the smartest. Unless you apply it, the fire station's trying to figure it out.
All right, any other questions on the multifamily for now? Table after.
It's definitely a work in progress.
Okay.
Something we're going to continue to pay attention to, because we definitely need to get something on the ball for sure.
All right. And then, zone by law update trailers for storage, possible votes.
In the zoning appendix, trailers for storage are not allowed. Doesn't, doesn't necessarily have to be a trailer with wheels, it could be a Conex box and still trail. They're not allowed. I know the town, we probably have a thousand, but we have no guidance. I have no enforcement on it. The only enforcement that I do have on it would be coming forward, any structure 200 square feet above needs to have a permit. Most of these Conex boxes are 10 by 20, 10 by 28, 14 by 28, 10 by 30, they're all pretty much 200 or more. There's never been a permitting process, there's never been anything on it, so if you go around town, you'll see them on people's property lines, you'll see them in front yards, even setbacks all over, you'll see multiple systems, some properties have five, six, seven of them, but we have no guidance on it. So this would be to put some guidance in there, so that could be an enforceability. Now, for me to go around town, putting tags on all these, it's not going to happen, I don't have enough to handle, and that's not what I'm looking for.
So what's the difference in adding, what does enclosed versus non-construction, what authority does that give you where you don't have with non-construction?
I don't know.
You say you don't have any enforcement options for these.
Right.
So you don't, so as written, you don't have any enforcement options for these trailers?
Right.
So what does changing non-construction to enclosed, what does that give you for enforcement options that you don't have already?
Because it's allowed in industrial, I believe it is, on the appendix.
Yeah.
It's allowed to have storage trailers for storage enclosed. But there's nothing about using these in VR or RA or even, I don't even think it's allowed in commercials, it was only industrial that is allowed to be used.
I'm just confused, like, you're saying you don't have enforcement now, but I'm just confused what this would allow you, what enforcement does this give you making this change that you don't already have, or don't have?
To be able, so that people would have to come to their apartment and say, can I put this trailer in here? Well, it's a trailer, you can't use the trailer. You're not supposed to have trailers for storage. So it gives that, that power, you're not supposed to have trailers for storage.
Well, you can't have them anyways, right now.
You can, but you're not supposed to have an RA and all that, but you can have them with different stuff.
Yeah, I think what she was wondering is, that people constantly call these things that they're for construction, and that's where we're running into it.
Yeah.
And it's hard to tell the determination whether or not it's construction or not.
See, the next, the next phase of this that's coming through now, is people are taking these Conex boxes and trying to make money on top.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I'm trying to head things off to be able to have some guidance on this, so if we have the guidance that says, you know, as it's written here, we'll just read it, use of trailers for enclosed storage in all districts other than industrial, use of trailers and semi-trailers for enclosed storage, not just non-construction, it's enclosed storage, it encompasses all uses of it.
So what's the difference between a Conex box being a non-construction and enclosed?
You get people that will say, I'm a landscaper, and this is a muddy shed, put my landscapes equipment in. And it's not, it's a storage shed.
This doesn't exist today though, Ken? Does this exist in our bylaws today as written?
No.
Okay, so.
The exist says for non-construction.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is in our bylaws. For 8.2.2 is in our bylaws, but the only change would be the word.
To enclosed.
Right, if I may answer the chair.
I see, we'll get to you.
Hey.
People know that the town themselves always use those for storage.
Yep, so there is a guidance in the unicele code that excludes the town.
It does, on by town council, a town meeting that was discussed, I've got to go back many years to look at it.
Wouldn't, wouldn't that be industrial though? Wouldn't that be in industrial areas?
Town is not exempt from this by law. That was standard at home.
I'm just worried about opening a can of worms, because use of trailers for non-construction, or, you know, change it to enclosed, what if your local builder has a trailer that he uses to keep his tools to go to the jobs?
So, I mean, if your local builder has, he's supposed to be registered town, it's a business, anyway.
Yeah.
You're allowed one commercial vehicle, not a 2,000. So if you have a trailer that you use it for storage equipment, that you bring to your yard, it would be a registered trailer, that would follow the business being registered with the town and the guidance for the 2,000.
I'm just trying to picture all the questions that could be coming out of town.
You've got, you've got.
Snowmobile trailers, like, that's going to be asked.
Right, but that's a registered vehicle.
Yeah.
These are not registered vehicles. You don't reg, there's no registration plate on a Conex box. There is on a snowmobile trailer, a utility trailer, an enclosed landscaping trailer, so those wouldn't even be in that same category.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of all the possible questions that are going to come in your way, because.
Through the chair, I can put a main tag on a 48 foot, it's registered trailer.
If it's registered, that's fine, it's different guidance.
And I have those, I'm not, you're all right?
Yeah, one commercial vehicle. One commercial vehicle.
Main tag, I don't think it says that it's a commercial tag. So a commercial and a portion, put a portion tag on it, that would be a different tag.
Through the.
It's weird, people do every.
Yeah.
Right.
A question that's a little bit, maybe more pertinent to the enclosed storage aspect of this, so if someone comes in and asks for a building permit for a shed that is going to be a 15 by 30 trailer or box, do you issue the permit or?
Potentially.
Yeah, okay, so that, so that, then you have a shed and it's permitted and it's all the other setback requirements and everything else gets satisfied.
It would be on the foundation if it's over 600 square feet and the whole thing.
Kind of permitted.
Right. But it wouldn't be said, you know, just built in against some sort of stone wall or?
Yeah, yep, on a hill.
So it just, it just gets a little.
Right, that's all that matters. So I think it's important that, you know, in discussions with the town, that we make it clear that this is, what it's trying to do is to stop the people that are using this system. And you can't put a trailer farm of, you know, shipping trailers, you know, in your, in your yard and fill it full of junk. That'll repercussions.
I mean, we don't have anything in the bylaws saying how many oak buildings you can have in your property.
Yeah.
It's just, the only thing I have from the building department is if it's 200 square feet or more, it requires a building permit.
They talked to the council briefly about this, we're talking about pre-existing, not reform. So once you change the bylaw, any of the existing prior to this change, it's pre-existing reform. This will only go after new existing people trying to do this. If it already has that.
Yep.
That's going to be so tough.
Because you have to know which ones are out there.
Yeah.
And you probably, you know which ones are probably out there, but.
I, we'll put it this way, I know the ones that have used the system, I don't know. I mean, you know, there's probably, if I had to guess a number, I'm going to guess 500 or more in town, in total. But there is some locations that there's three, six, seven trailers on the lot, you know, and it's just, they're all over 200 square feet, they all should have been permitted. And if you're permitting, you wouldn't have seven trailers sit together, you've got to have clearance and all that.
And then I'm just picturing the one smart alec who's going to say, I'm just going to move the doors.
You know, he moved the doors, it's still, he still has to permit.
But we're not enclosed anymore.
Yeah.
If I remove the door?
Yeah, like, all right, I'm going to put it. So what's up with that? I'm going to put the trailer there, but I'm going to take the doors off, and it's not enclosed at that point, it's just an open.
It's a skilled structure, 200 square feet.
All right. Still requires per.
Do we fix that just by saying it's having closed storage? Use of trailers for storage?
Yeah, you can remove non-enclosed and enclosed, use for storage.
Suppose that stops somebody from having, you know, a trailer dump with no axles sitting in their yard loading scrap metal, just sitting there.
Hey, there's electric contractors that have, you know, dump bodies, pry axles, or something like that. And they, they're licensed in town, they have their permits, I sign the renewals when they come in on my desk.
Yeah.
For the business, they've been there a lot, they've been there for many years.
Mm-hmm.
And that's not what I'm even looking at. I'm just looking at, you know, six, seven in the yards and like, together all the way across, you know.
Yeah.
And as we keep getting more densely populated in town, it becomes more of an issue in my department.
From phone calls?
Yeah.
And if I don't have any guidance to work off of, on the phone calls, all I have is, well, it's over 200 square feet, but how long has it been in? Now I got to go through proving that it hasn't been there 10 years of law. It just, it would eat up a lot of time. Ends up with a lot of trips to the land court in Boston.
I just know there's going to be a lot of questions and a lot of. I just know there's going to be a lot of questions and a lot of debate if this goes forward at a town meeting because like you said, there's thousands of these out there somewhere. Those thousands of people, they need to figure out what the hell they're going to do with this or they're going to think they need to pull out or you're going to be knocking on the door and they're going to get fined for these. So if there's that many out there, there's going to be a lot of people that are going to be heated with this and have concerns and they're going to ask a lot of questions and there's going to be probably a heated debate.
It would have to be brought forward that, you know, from if, from when that was enacted, that's when that starts.
Yeah.
Through the chair, would it help to say things that aren't on wheels? Like the Conex box?
Well, no, you still get the registration.
I know, but at least.
Now you're signaling it out and I'm not trying to signal anything out.
Yep.
Use of unregistered trailers for storage? Or they're just registered. It's still the same issue, right?
No, because they won't get registered. They won't be able to register them, right?
Yeah, because you can't really register a car.
Yeah.
Doesn't have wheels.
A regular.
So like some of it, some rare outfitted ones for certain special.
If they have realitation, they have wheels and they're unable to be driven down the road and you could register it.
You need a van to register it. You need a van.
Yeah.
Conex box doesn't have a van. Anything else you're up to.
Yeah, with a serial number maybe, but.
Just a serial number on a trailer on that, but usually it's a van. Unless you're all homemade, you can call it homemade. Steak offs and all that.
I'm just still caught up and confused about what the difference of enclosed and non-construction, like what that's going to change for enforcement if, I know people play games, but like it's a Conex box, it's for, you're putting your garden tools in there, it's not for construction.
Maybe just use enclosed trailers for storage.
Unregistered? Unregistered. It's going to have 27 names by the time we're done.
Now you feel like my problem that I have trying to enforce anything about it.
Yeah. Yeah, I get it because it's in the bylaws that they're not allowed.
And it's just one of those things that's, it's run, and it's not in this town, only it's all over, that, you know, we've got a couple of evil stores and companies that are out there and they make it to kill us, all these things that people make.
Oh, they're great.
And they're so storage, but yeah, sure, rob it off, you know? I did have evil call me one time and ask if you're allowed and I said, they're not allowed in town. And he said, oh, okay. So maybe I shouldn't drop the second one to the guy that had it first.
Like you're getting calls. Or you get calls, yeah, they're not allowed. Well, I just went through the town and I saw a hundred of them. Why are they not allowed?
That's the big idea. They, why can't I have it?
That's what I fear.
I mean, I'm just looking for some way.
Yeah.
I think I have some guidance on how we can control it before it totally gets out of hand. As the land gets less and less with more buildings, so on, it really becomes more visible. Board, any questions, comments?
Pushing the council obviously.
I saw your hand up. This is, this part necessarily isn't a public hearing.
Okay.
Do you have like a quick conflict?
Yep, my question was answered.
Okay.
So through the chair, what? I guess if this, the wording here may be vague or troublesome for, you know, existing buildings. What you're looking for is something going forward and if you were to change this entirely to say that trailers or boxes or whatever you want are considered storage facilities or sheds and fall under the permitting requirements. And then that gives you the ability to deal with it. People won't have a question then because they know, oh, I want to put a trailer in my backyard and use it for storage. Oh, I need a permit for that? Okay. Then it.
But the kind of conflicts with the laws as they're written about 200 square feet or less does not require a permit.
Yeah, yeah, smaller ones.
So if somebody comes in with a 10 by 20 box.
Yeah.
They don't need a permit. But the guy right in front of it just happened to get the 10 by 24.
Right.
You use a permit.
I get it.
But if it's at that point, you have every authority to go on property in the courts, zoning bylaws and setbacks and everything like that.
I don't have the authority to go on anybody's property. Yeah, knock on the door unless I go get a door. But the problem is that now you've got, I've got that personnel that's able to watch it. Now they've got to take some time to grow it and I don't have that personnel. So if it was just as simple as, you know, either they're not allowed or and or if they exceed 200 square feet, they need permits. I don't know which way you would want to go with it as a board.
That might be an option because I don't want to. There's concerns and that might maybe be an option where, yeah, treat it like a shed and you need a permit.
Same guidance, it's 200 square feet. It's a structure. When you're using it as a storage facility, it's a structure. Whether it was a trailer or a seat container or, you know, pulling down the highway, once you're using it in your yard as a structure, as a storage facility, it's a, it's a structure on the property.
Through the chair, this is like one example. Thing is, so you don't modify, you've got to take two years off if you're not going to register the trailer. Your trailers, most young guys, 24, 28, 30 foot trailers, oxygen is out, you've got to get rid of your trailer. Well, this is very expensive. They might go back racing in three years. This is, this is Pandora's box, I'm going to say. I understand the point, but the circumstance, there's people, horse trailers, right? Yeah, I got four horses this year. Ah, no, I only got one on the park down the road back.
Keep paying it.
Why register it, right?
Keep paying it.
Yeah, but, uh, no, nobody involved, they're going to get rid of it. It's all, it's a, it's a tough duty. That's why most people are out this way, so they can do that kind of, that's why you have the land, you have the trailer or whatever or so on and so forth, you can park it. Until you have a boat trailer. In reality, it's a trailer. It can be used for storage. You don't register it if I get it in the backyard, well, what do you do? Why you go?
Matt, if you can do some research on what other towns may have done to try to tackle this or if anyone's researched or put anything through. They need to have options.
Yeah, we have a problem to solve.
Without opening Pandora's box.
We don't want to tie everybody's hands completely, but you don't want somebody with a $600,000 house to put a used tractor trailer trailer five feet from the property line right next, right there, you know, in your front yard or backyard. That's not what we're talking about, having the land and you're putting it out back where you don't see it every day unless you look out back. It's not in your front yard. So if everybody did that, there would still be people that complain, but not as many.
Unfortunately, fortunately, the population that we have in town, there's not the old population, we're getting a population from Metro West.
Coming from the 128 area.
Yeah, and as, I'm telling you, as they come in, I'm the one who gets the complaints. I'm the one who gets the head on about these things. So I'm just trying to, through the board, you guys talk it over and come up with something. I'm just trying to find a way to give some guidance going forward with this so that there's some kind of a control on it. Not saying you can't have it, not saying any of that, but I mean, if it's a 200 square foot unit, it should be permitted to begin with. And whether it is or it isn't, it still needs to be within the set that guidelines, which I'm going to say 90% of them are not. So, you know, it's not fair to the butter who potentially is coming to me and saying, hey, I want to put up a, you know, a post bean shed on my property and they go through all the rules and regulations and they do their 25 foot setback or 50, whatever it happened to be, and they're permitting and everything and then the day they next go, it's afraid of you on the line.
Then you don't want to punish the person who's doing it right and has it out there, doing it right, it's in the middle of the property, no setback.
There's some kind of guidance to be able to say, listen, you know, as you said, I'm driving on the road, it's even get dropped. You've got to make sure that that's out of the setbacks. A lot of the time I get, well, I don't know where they are. That's your responsibility.
Where they're clearly put right where you know. We've seen that before.
Oh, yeah.
All right. All right, some dialogue and research to be made.
Just put it up in the eye there so, you know, like you said, I'm not trying to open Pandora's box or anything else.
Yeah.
Just hold the bullets, just some kind of guidance.
Some good insight.
Good.
Ken, thank you.
Good to see you. Thank you.
Any tape before going back to the public hearing? Okay, all right. So public hearing continued for proposed amendments to the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land, possible votes.
Since we found our latest original by council, I'm just going to go through them on screen. I'm not sure that a copy is packed in all the licenses. Page five for ANR's signature block, signature block retaining suitable space to record the signatures of the sub numbers and stuff. Located on the right side of the, you amended that to say the signature block. So I just wanted to amend that maybe. Come on, page.
That was a question.
This is 14. That's the one where the attention retention pond basis is shown on the rental parcel of land that hasn't changed. Yes, it says that's in the update if it's preferred language in the first place. Question on that?
What phase is that?
Page 40. For any amendments and discussing. Yep. We can discuss it as I go through them. Do you want to discuss this one now?
Yeah. Trying to go back to my previous position, my previous meeting regarding eating a piece of property with a town for retention on the integration base. Making potential buildable lots, non-formal, non-buildable lots. My opinion, there's some more beway with how we describe easement and that language versus taking ownership of potential buildable pieces of property, putting that on the payments.
I understand, but I don't, I'd also say it's kind of a cost of the business, right? I mean, right now you get a property with a giant easement on it where a person's getting a tax rate on it and it's property that we may or may not be able to access because they put some sort of barrier or we need a consent because it hasn't been maintained in a while. It's like, it's been nightmarish to try to get back and maintain a lot of these things.
With respect to that, I understand, but the parcels that deed it directly to the town, there's no, you don't have to do that anymore. If it's a whole yard, so it's not potential $300,000, $400,000, Allison's going to be on that now. And they paid that $150,000 for that lot and they bought that piece of land that's potentially going to be buildable now going forward. It hasn't been pulled before, the person who did the land, now that bolt, that potential piece of property is now voided. You know, it's the price of doing business, so that's kind of a high price of doing business.
So looking at. Weight and heights. This one, there's flash development where they had to give over space. Attention pond is not its own parcel here. It came straight off the road here with the first basin and then needed to a larger basin, right? So this one, I mean, this one would make sense if that was its own parcel, whether or not, it owns space or not, right? Because where are you going to put a house on the property? It comes straight off the street, right? And that's one of our newer subdivisions in town.
And we will not.
Right, well, we will hopefully if you're attached with a straight copy, we'll own this entire space around.
Read it through there. It's at the top middle.
This basin is mostly right here. Sorry, one there, one up front over here. This parcel contains most of the basin and that parcel's going to be given to the town over here. This one, oh, sorry, it's right here, it's easement on this guy's property. That's where it is, sorry. So right now we're going to be getting an easement, it's going to shave off most of this guy's parcel anyway. So what good is him to own that land where he can't even use it in the house on one side, right? That one was shaved off, he could still have some of the furniture right here, he could have had easement to the parcel.
Right, for the, for the chair, that easement being needed, that still needs to be provided on one side of the parcel to do whatever.
Yeah, but even if he carved that one off, he's going to put a house back here.
Not even the house.
He needed a drive way to get there and he'd have to go over the easement for maintenance. That's just, so I got another one over here on William Drive.
So that's Matt, for another example of one that you, we don't like but kind of.
Right, right. So I got this one on William Drive, this house isn't shown here, but this one was built and the bulkhead actually goes onto the easement. Kind of a bit of an issue that we have to have addressed, you know, like this approach there, but this one would have enough frontage running the road. Was, it's full, but that one, I guess, you know.
But they can.
If it's a lot, they could have had its frontage just on the road. So this one could have been its own parcel as well.
It would respectfully save that, for whatever reason, that didn't meet the sizing and everything else with the attention on that we made that, basically that lot, not the board.
No, this lot is still buildable.
This lot would still be buildable except it's frontage on the easement. Say that same size lot on auto name road coming off that is over there.
Isn't just the three that we're looking at for road exceptions, all three basins could be served on?
Through the chair, I think what Jake was trying to say is that if you were starting on a blank piece of paper and you could make 10 lots. Because you had 500 feet on one side of the road and 500 feet on the other side of the road, but you had to have a basin somewhere in there, you'd have to give up one of those lots to have it. So you can't, 10 lots, 10 houses anymore, you can only have nine.
I brought that up to, that's the cost of the house.
Yeah, that's.
Who wants to live in a house that has the tension basin as an easement? Like that's a tough sell, even in a rural, like that's hard.
Because you own the property that the easement, that the tension is on.
Right.
I mean, that's not very hard.
Right. So this one, this one has the inside construction yet. We don't even know where the tension basin is going to go. We don't even know where the tension basin is going to go with the area that's.
I'm surprised it's all mapped.
Yeah, because they had their lot lines recorded. So, it's part of their endorsement, but it hasn't started yet. I mean, they're okay, they're, covenant takes until 2007, so get it started.
I know the one on Joseph Road we're looking at. I think there's examples in times when one or the other can work. So, like the corner one on Joseph Road, the town doesn't need it, they can access it through, right at the, at the road.
Yeah.
You know, they don't worry about going on to someone's, you know, going through someone's garden in front of you, you know, they have the access right there. So, they were able to have a house built there.
There's some over here.
But then you have a.
On Woodland Road, but this person has a basin entirely in their backyard, and we have to cut a path through here just to get to the maintenance.
And it does create a liability of us.
Absolutely.
You know, if we're not maintaining it, or a kid falls in it, or something happens.
Absolutely.
Through the chair, would it be possible to allow some kind of relief to a builder putting a subdivision together that's willing to give the town that property if it makes the lot non-conforming? But I'm not saying, you know, within reason, whatever we could decide that was.
Anything's possible with subdivision, right?
Yeah.
You guys can create a lot that's, that doesn't have adequate frontage as far as the subdivision. Absolutely.
That may be a way to address it.
Yeah.
Through the chair, I think if we get to thinking about the problem we're trying to solve, it's town access to those bases. And there's multiple ways of doing that. If we specify, if there's an easement, that there has to be a direct access to the road, and I don't know how you do that with some sort of covenant or the deed or whatever to say that they can't put a fence across and things like that.
That's the order that he starts with on this one.
Yes. So, or you can deed the land to the town. And so, it's one or the other, as long as you don't put something that's impossible to get, because it's the corners at the road and, you know. And then, you know, market, the market drives it. Person wants to buy that lot, hey, you know, maybe once every five years, they're gonna come in there with a brush hog and clean this out and go in and do some work there.
You also have the liability of kids falling into this thing.
Oh, yeah.
Getting hurt or something, and that comes to town responsibility as they didn't maintain it or it's full of water, the kid gets, it's just, there's a lot of issues with it being a time liability.
For people.
Yeah, absolutely.
Other people.
Question. When they eventually sell the property, at the closing, it'll be disclosed as an easement.
If the agent knows.
But do they really understand what that means?
Not necessarily.
This easement, which means trucks are gonna come through your property, you're gonna have this big basin that has to be maintained.
Right.
It looks like your land, but it isn't.
Right.
Can't do anything with it.
Right.
There may be some conflict.
Yeah, it's misleading. It's like you have two acres, but they grow up at the same.
And it's a pond.
Through the chair, they can find that as part of the title search.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
Yeah, this is wasting metal that you should've done.
Right. So, I just, it being on its own town parcel should be our priority. If someone wants to ask for a waiver and put it, put it on as an easement, they can absolutely ask for a waiver. But as for a conventional plan, I think this should be on its own lot, just for all those reasons.
As long as we make it clear that there's a waiver process.
Anything in subdivision, you can waive.
Yeah. So, then.
But if we put both options out there, it's gonna pick the easement or the rest.
Request one thing through the chair. Can Adam bring up where, please?
If you'd like.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Because they're the ones that have to take care of it.
Adam, man, or?
It's the Howard department that does all the maintenance, huh? I think it would be a prudent effort where, see what he's come up against, where the benefits compared to what they were owned by the town, what is the pro, what is the con, then wait until that happens. Because they're the ones that are gonna have to confront that landowner or person and say, "Hey, I need to get over there, but the shed's in the way. What do you do? I know with the gas line going behind my house, do whatever you want. Tell you to break up, we will tear it down, but we have to get there. Because we have the easement right." And I used to have to go in that to all these attention ponds, where you start opening up. I think Adam would be the one to know what ways to come up against it.
Just write my text.
All right, we'll get back to that one.
On page 15. That's perpetual analysis, terminer of volume. Question. Adding the signature block language to the right side of the plan. And then the irregularity factor, which we talked about last week. I moved it from the A and R piece and moved it under the subdivision plan. Again, this is waivable, anything is, but seeing a plan of conventional lines might be the best bet. So, you can see conventional, and then you can see one of the others. It's kind of where.
So, they can't, the chair, what you're trying to do is, in a new subdivision layout, have this in place. But anything else within the towns on individual lots, it would not apply.
Yeah, nothing, there's still an apply to anything else that reduces.
So, if somebody has a chunk of land and they wanna break it up in a way they want, as long as it's a corner by law, it can be done, this would not apply to it. So, you could still make those irregular lots on land that's already out there, breaking off a piece of land or two or whatever. But should land be in there, any subdivision of so many lots and above, so that, because sometimes it's a three lot subdivision, or, you know what I mean? Is there a minimum where it starts at? So, it's not?
Lines are building the roadway, it's a subdivision. To add frontage to the lot.
Okay.
What about a common driveway?
That's not a subdivision. Common driveway can service two houses by right and four of the social. But I think the requirements are that all the lots have to have a frontage on a public way, previous, which just did have limited access as well, and the common driveway is service. Can't service any natural parcel.
Maybe 1000 feet for each.
Through the chair, could you cite a specific location of this? 4.2 point. This is 4.2. 4.2.3, letter. I-13. Sorry, I-1.
You can have the updates, right?
Yeah. Printing all these out.
You're seeing a lot of perplexed faces out here.
Yeah. No, I understand, I didn't.
These are the old additions that are updated in the summer.
This is my only fear with it is just someone coming forward with a plan like I had, where they're just trying to make a family compound, a residential compound, and they had to get tricky with lot lines to make it work.
Yep, they could ask for waivers. Absolutely. We'd like to see what a conventional plan would look like first, and if they needed to add more lots, the waiver process, they could ask for waivers. See what a conventional plan would look like with the R factor, they could really work that side.
Through the chair, so you're gonna suggest that they go through the exercise of making it dummy, and then go back and re-engineer and make it the way they want it?
Submitting two copies of the plan, one's a conventional subdivision and one is one with.
Just increase engineering costs.
Right. A lot of time to see that.
I know, yeah, I know exactly what you're saying. Everybody talks about costs, right? And here we got adding costs. That's why I was saying should it apply if there's only three or more, four or more, or something like that. You know what I mean?
If you don't have three lots, other chances are your lots not gonna be there because you had to build a public site on a road that provides enough frontage. I mean, chances are those roads are not gonna be controlled.
I guess, maybe go around the table and just, if one likes this or doesn't like this, just.
I don't like that idea having that extra cost. You're forcing somebody to come in with too fully yet such preference, which is not cheap. On hold on one over the other. You should be able to come in with one set of preference and say, "Eh, eh, eh."
And they often change to the process.
So, I'll tell you that all these lots are likely, they're all equivalent and all frontage, all, likely the ETR factors are all serious. Probably has all lots that conform as well. Joseph Road, William Drive, White Heights, all. No regularly shaped lots on those subdivisions. We're trying to avoid.
Yeah, it's all.
That's the con.
Right. Through the chair, may I ask this?
This lot.
Why are we trying to avoid it? If somebody wants to buy it, they're gonna buy it. If they don't, they won't. Right? I mean, we're just talking about free market and everything else.
But that, that wouldn't have been some kind of subdivision.
Right.
That was probably an A and R, cut off land.
Right.
So, I don't know, well, our changes wouldn't affect that with the setback.
Right. They're everywhere in town, but on subdivisions, they tend to be wrong.
Yeah, I think the developers are putting, they're coming to us with good plans, and I don't think they need to have that restriction. They're basically, the new subdivisions are fine, it's just all those, it's all the A and Rs and pre-existing stuff that we wouldn't be able to control anyways, that are creating these sorts of lots.
All right, if you guys wanna get rid of it, I'll get rid of it.
I'm fine with not having it. And they have good plans, too, like so.
And the cost?
For anyone? Look to, wanna have it, or think we need it?
I was okay having it, but I don't need to have it.
I guess just maybe just go around the table and just, seems like it's kind of maybe 50/50, so we just get rid of it or keep it? Or get rid of it?
I agree. I think we gotta cost just to remove it.
Yeah, fine.
Give it removed. I think we should keep it. I'm most worried about cost to a developer, whether it's waiving, construction materials and methods, you know? It's a big project, if it adds a little bit of cost, if it's to our benefit, if you don't think it's to our benefit, I understand, you might think it's excessive, but it's business of saving them a few pennies, and we end up with a mess, you know?
Through the chair, if I can, what kind of mess is it? People, if they wanna buy that lot, that's odd.
I'm talking generally about subdivisions, you know, this, we have a history of offering all sorts of waivers, you know, lousy tar sidewalks instead of concrete sidewalks, you know, we give away granite curbs and inlets and all that stuff. You know, I don't know why we do that, because it's a lesser product, it's to the detriment of the people who live there and to the town in general, who accept it and maintain it. So, if, and frankly, I think those odd type, odd lots, when I see them, I think that somebody missed the bucket. Somebody just wasn't paying attention to have those torch and lots. So, it's a personal thing, too. I mean, there is some subjectivity here. So, I'm sorry, lots are issued.
Just trying to get them.
More or less, the house is gonna be where it's gonna be, the lot winds on the back of, for a year, conforming to the, to the other requirements we set for it.
Mike, can you put her favor one way or another?
I pass.
I can do without it, because I think anybody driving down any street in the town of Douglas, who knows where everybody's lot line is? The only way you know where it is is by pulling a view map. Driving down any road, you have no clue where that property line is for big neighbors or anybody. So, if somebody wants to live there, and they know the line is, it's their choice.
You know, they don't really have curves. You can't really tell.
Not comparable, profit lines.
Or profit lines.
Yeah. Not those profit lines.
They're not state, you're gonna have to picture a图.
Yeah. Hey, were you, listen, is there a certain, something you wanna chime in on or look to have? This, I don't wanna have you here for too long, if there's like one certain thing you're looking to target, or? Okay.
Through the chair, were you on Zoom at the last meeting?
Yeah.
You are, yeah. Hi. Nice to meet you.
Thanks for coming.
Better than TV, right?
Yeah, exactly. I, I, I didn't come that time.
Yeah, right, we'll keep marching if you, I'm always scanning, so if you, just raise your hand if you have a question or comment.
Um, well, I guess.
Yeah, so, if you have a comment, can I just give you a name and address, please, for the minute ticker?
Sure. Marcy LeBlanc.
Marcy LeBlanc?
Southwest Maine.
Southwest Maine, all right, Marcy.
I was looking through other town planning, like, of our own subdivisions, and I was wondering if we might be able to, like, is this meeting only to address what's currently in here, or is there a possibility of adding to it?
We're open, yeah, it's kind of just like an open thing, we're just kind of making improvements of what we have, and if there's something anyone would think would be beneficial, we'll go over it and maybe we'll add it. But most of what we have is trying to fix issues we've come across.
Oh, sure, sure.
So.
Yeah.
Got it?
Uh, I mean, for, for right now, I'm, I'm good.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Matt?
All right, so, this is 4.2.4H, just added that R current for the datum, because that'll probably get up to 6.2. On page 17, this is 4.2.5, item two. So, the planning board or other entity designated by the board.
Yeah, they're covered in the engineer.
Right. Yep. And then item four, performance guarantee. So, this is where the language, "Performance guarantee shall include a line item for maintenance of the roadway, sidewalk, driveway, and stolen or constructional utilities until the road is accepted at its public way at town meeting." And we add it, "Or until subdivision's completed and roadway is conveyed to a homeowner's association or other similar ownership here," as town council added. "The lease of the check or bond or any portion thereof shall be subject to written approval by the planning board. The work has been completed according to requirements." And the council added, "Any performance guarantee shall be bound by agreement subject to review approval by the board and town council." Simply leave it at that.
Okay.
This is what came up with McIntyre when it did this.
Yep.
Ford, have any thoughts on it?
It's adding a maintenance item to the...
Yeah. Okay.
All right, uh, page eighteen, 4.2.8, decision. "Approvative grant that shall be endorsed on the final drawing, not the original drawing because there's likely amendments taking place throughout the public hearing process." So that's final instead of original right here.
Okay.
And further on. "The applicant is responsible for having the endorsed plan recorded at the registry of deeds within 180 days of the date of endorsement." That's consistent with the statute. Questions, comments?
And that's just a housekeeping thing? Just kind of matching state regs and...
Yep. Any questions, council? 4.2.10, as-built. That's getting rid of the town engineer again.
Yeah. What's the blue that town council had in there?
Our other entities may be designated by the board.
Okay. So they appear to be or...
Right. 4.3. Driveways, county driveways, 4.3.7. Letter E, minimum width. We had sixteen feet, we wanted to up that to eighteen.
Yep.
That's Ford, so I've updated that. 5.1.1 F.
Yes.
So this just came up today.
Yes.
So, um, Swicker, if you'd like to explain.
What, uh, so what is this?
This is a street...
Street.
...laid out and intersect as possible at right angles. No street shall intersect any other street at less than sixty degrees.
If you could, please, back to the chair, go back to the Douglas Sutton subdivision?
Sure.
Where they had that funky angle on that road?
Right here.
See that real funky angle? I think any angle more than ninety degrees, the print should have a degree angle on what it is. That's more than sixty degrees. Take that right now and it slipped by us. We let it happen. So, I know I'm getting pinky here, but with the protractor, that's a sixty degree angle right there. That's probably forty, fifty, maybe? And it happened. And the main reason being is, try to make that radius corner in a triaxal for a truck. You ain't got to do it. Even though they drew a picture saying, "Oh, yeah, that's easy. Come down by Wall Street, Oak Street, Northwest Maine and try to make that hit and turn." You're not doing it.
Can you zoom out that?
So, I think the angle is...
Curious, is that the... What part of... Is that like, within the... That's not coming off of the... That's coming off the existing.
Yeah, that's coming off the existing and they drew that angle in there.
I don't remember. I thought we...
No, they got by us. I argued on it, but it went through. So, and I also think language should be, any angle other than ninety degrees should have the degree angle on the print. So we know what it is. So we're not guessing at it to prevent that from happening.
Maybe notice, maybe notice somewhere on the application and...
Well, just right on the print, on the radius, all you got to do is put in what angle it is.
I imagine that could be a sightline issue too, an angle that severe.
Yeah.
That could also be a potential sightline issue too.
Right, well, anything, because you've got a blind corner there.
So we have a degree in...
Well, sixty degrees.
Yeah.
Which I think is way too tight. And on that print there, they got away with going, I make it maybe fifty or even forty on that corner. They got to allow it in.
Yeah, I see why they were trying to get that extra...
That's correct. So I don't think that should be allowed whatsoever. And knowing that, I mean, poor people, if you have a camper, you're pulling with a truck or anything, man, you ain't going to make that corner.
Going that way?
Luckily, there is a second way out of it.
There is. We got luck on this one. There is a straight shot, but you allow this in someplace where there isn't, you're not getting in or out of it.
Yeah, I think we could have did some better stuff with this, but...
Yeah. I think moving forward, though, that's why we're doing this, make it a seventy degree and anything other than a ninety, the radius will be written on the print on the A and R. So we know what it is.
Only look at it now. I was newer to the chair. I wish we kind of just have them go on the street and, no, you're not getting that lot going on the street.
Yeah, and who's going to come in there and try to measure?
Yeah.
You're not. Make them prove to us what angle they're at. I think everything should be ninety on ninety when possible. But there again, you try to work no cost and lot lines and lots, but that's all the wood right there.
I think they had to meet grade.
Yeah, there was a grade issue there too, but...
But still.
Yeah. And they were trying to get that one correct. Yeah, that's a good, that's a good point, Mike. Ford and, you know, kind of like that.
I agree with that.
It's tough to tell with the glare. Is that a lot of blue?
No, it's all black. So, 5.1.2 width. Uh, there was a correction here. Reference to section 3.2, it should be seven, not out of six. But I forgot what it's called. Six is parcel and item seven is streets. So, so the width should be referencing streets and out of seven. The minimum width favor should be twenty-four feet. Oh, regarding the basin, I did get a response from Adam. Response was, my question was, how do you feel about stormwater basins being on their own lots instead of easements? Response was, that would make things much easier for us to maintain them given the problem. This is where we cross easement item off, because we put them on separate parcels. 5.3, recreational areas. This is where we require them to show parks should be located for playground and recreation and provide suitable access for public parking. And council added, as may be appropriate harness. Under that, we crossed off the piece, "The board shall not require dedication of such recreation areas without just compensation." Which is, I don't know how that may be. Right along. 6.3, on page twenty-nine.
Okay.
Adequate underground street lighting. Making it specific to underground.
So underground approved by the highway department? We talked about that, making sure that...
I know the streetlight, we reference the, uh, the lamp.
Yes.
Okay. Does that street lighting there?
So...
Shouldn't the street lighting and the mailboxes be under the same circumstance with the highway department? Because they're going to have to maintain it.
To the chair, I thought that that streetlight was going to be bigger. Have you seen it?
No.
It's not, it's, it's not tall.
I haven't seen it. Does it cover the area above?
I was just driving by and I saw it out of the corner of my eye and I said, I...
What's that?
I was expecting some, like, a streetlight. And it's more like a...
Port light?
No, it's just, it's not that high above the mailboxes. Maybe that's the purpose. I have... I'd love to go back and look at it, but I guess I was expecting like...
A streetlight?
Streetlight size, streetlight.
So, we talked about the grass strips and we talked about removing the grass strips entirely. Instead of renumbering all the sections, I just put the sections in touch with our plant. We'll go back and renumber it.
Is there something we can throw in there?
We haven't finished up on the streetlight though. What are we going to do with the streetlights?
Sorry.
Yeah, let's wrap up when... Are we going to have very low full streetlights there? Is that the minimum full streetlights away?
Of a design subject to approval by the planning board when required. So we could always send that out for council opinion or for highway opinion, but it's up to us. It's up to us.
Adequate.
Right.
Adequate underground streetlights up to us.
Yeah, designed subject to approval by the planning when street lighting is required. We could outsource that if we want to. That's entirely in our, in our board. If we put it under highway, then it automatically goes to us.
Anytime there's a street crossing.
Well, no, what I want to stop is, this development has its design light, this development has that design light. So you have fifty different light systems out there. It should be one. So everybody knows what they're going to go do it. This is what goes up.
Yeah, but we, we have to start this. We have nothing.
Well, with that though, I think with it saying, "approved by the planning board," we'll get Adam's stamp of approval before we approve it.
So they have to the board and how they want to make that decision if they want, outsource it to someone within the town or even outsource it with a consultant, you can. Absolutely.
I think we... Trying to keep everything uniform, right? So, to the chair, make this that part. You don't need fifty different light bulbs scored at the highway department to service each development.
Right.
You can have one light bulb to service the town. You know, we're talking about nickels and dimes and seven dollars, this is how you do it.
Yeah, we just did an LED streetlight upgrade anyway, so they have to be...
So most of the lights should be the same.
Right. Yep. At least they all are, at least all the product, both of the old ones are.
Well, that's what I mean. When it's in a subdivision...
Is there a certain brand, style?
Yeah. It's in the part of our...
Something like that?
Yeah, they're part of our green community brand when we did that.
So maybe just find the language of what the light required for the green community is and like, that's what has to be.
All right, but that could, that could change. Those could be out of style, out of style at some point. And that could, that could evolve with months, less than a year.
Yeah, because we...
Specs aren't built.
A new brand could come out, we could replace them all again.
Yeah.
I guess just, we're going to approve it. It's up to us.
Yeah. I just can't have the style of it. I don't kill it.
No.
Yeah, yes.
They have to show the structural life on the planning board.
Yes. We have nothing to compare it to, is what we're getting at. What do we compare it? I can show you any, I can show you a box. You've got nothing to compare it to to what's already out there. This is all I don't say.
Suppose it's that time we get...
I mean, we move forward, but I don't...
Yeah.
I think it needs, have these a little bit more.
So, on the grass strips, we're removing that entirely, right? Based on the highway's recommendation, right? Because the trees and the strips, which is becoming an issue. Oh, we added, the trees are optional, located no less than five feet from the sidewalk. So more than five feet from the sidewalk, hopefully in the right way. We didn't specify whether it's in the right way or not.
And then, is sidewalks a whole separate section?
Yes.
Okay.
Jake? I got to go.
We good? All right.
How would you feel about these requirements?
Yeah, it's...
It's consistent with what we talked about last week.
Yeah, and it's kind of highway's recommendation. And he showed us why that's kind of necessary in maintenance.
2.7, item three, so we get to the center of mailbox. Mailbox, project, part of the project within the right of way, so there's no easement board on some property, due within the right of way. And these are the certain lights that we asked for or as equivalent, as approved by the highway superintendent, was the language I had. And these are the different counts that we put in previously. Rest of these are all getting rid of the town engineer. Agent. Town engineer, engineer, oh. Electric telephone cable installation of underground and it used to say or above ground electric. Cross that off, so it's just underground electric. Telephone cable. This is all where updates planning board, agent, go to town engineer. So this is where trees, trees and plantings were still in here. And I asked you if we should keep it or get rid of it. He said, "Keep it," because even if they're optional, there's still needs to be some sort of guidance on it.
Okay. So, nothing changed.
No.
Word and why is just...
No.
Besides putting town engineer.
Right. Rest of this is all, we're still on engineer. And then at the end, where it says separability is an actual word, separability is appropriate.
Um, can we go to the sidewalks? Uh, so many of them are approved.
Oh, all right.
Six, nine, point one. Tell me install the cones of the, of the plant. I mentioned it too before and Mr. Preston mentioned it again tonight. I think we should at least put concrete sidewalks in. They have a lot longer shelf life and they'll last a lot longer. You know, if the developer wants to do asphalt, come to us and ask for a waiver, let them argue it, but I think the president should be sidewalks. I've seen so many asphalt sidewalks cracked, raised. Concrete ones just have a little bit better defense against the elements.
Shall we specify the type of concrete? Because it makes a big difference. And/or wire mesh and how thick. I think it should all have wire mesh, at least four inches in fiber of concrete. That holds it together. Prevents it from the extra splitting, cracking and heaving. Because the wire locks it all together. Otherwise, it can break in and the exact even worse than asphalt. But by doing it that way, it's all locked in. And if anything ever happens, we're going to use a sock kind of handle this.
Yeah, a sock.
So the wire is irrelevant. But at least, though, we're taking that avenue.
You know, do it, do it right. Do it the best, use the best products, work with it.
You know, they're going to say, you know, what are you driving over the bulldozer? At times, I know there's certain things you definitely look to save money on, but the town's going to own it. By doing it right that way, it's less cost to the taxpayers. You know what I mean? Now, forming might be too much, I don't know, but this year, look at the frost in the roads. You put only two inches of concrete, you think that's going to take this frost either? It'll last for nothing. You need to have something substantial to withstand our winters.
Trying to look up this highway's spec...
I wonder if there's like some kind of built, you know, built, some code that's saying what a standard good...
Public difference.
Does someone go off of that? Matt?
Acton actually has a really extensive sidewalk section in their, in their rules and regulations.
What town?
Acton. Um, I know it's, we're not Acton, but they had some, some pretty good points. And they might, they might talk about concrete and specifications regarding when to pour. Actually, that was one of the things that I was going to mention, is that they specify when, uh, streets and roadways and sidewalks can be poured or sealed. And that there's a where period to prove that the, it's a sound and correct application so that it doesn't come back on the highway department. on the highway department.
No, a lot of, I think, we try our best. A lot of these are peer reviewed, and when critical stuff is happening, we usually do have an engineer represented by the town there to make sure that, you know, hey, we're teaming up for an asphalt day of rain, and so there is, we do have like a checks and balances on that, but, yeah, we try to find like a, some kind of sidewalk standard.
I was also hoping that we could specify that they, there are, what did they say? Adequate, no, that's not it, handicap ramps at the intersections in accordance to Massachusetts Architectural Access Board standards.
ADA compliance, state law.
Yeah, so they should be. The plans should be submitted and conform with the state laws, so.
Acton's sidewalk right now. Sidewalks, walkways, bicycle paths, consistent six inches of bank run gravel, covered with three inches of processed grade gravel. Gravel pitch recovered with wear and service, two and a half.
That's like one.
Class one, type one, batuminous concrete, so that's asphalt.
Oh. Batuminous concrete?
Yeah, batuminous concrete is asphalt. Right? Batuminous is regular paper. They're not even asking for concrete sidewalks.
But they would say batuminous asphalt.
No, I don't know why, but BC is like asphalt. It's regular black top batuminous.
Mass states back for sidewalk, concrete sidewalks.
Yeah, their reference here is stretch cross section. Talks about this same reference that we have for the mass highway departments, standard specs for highways and bridges. Then they'd say that it should be batuminous concrete, so it's kind of killing.
Trying to come up with a good answer for us. And then, do we need a reference ADA compliant ramps for crosswalks and?
Batuminous concrete is asphalt. ADA compliance is a state requirement. It absolutely has to be done on any sidewalk, in any road. It's an absolute requirement. It could be cited as a belt suspender's approach in our subdivision rights, but it's not entirely necessary.
Okay. Just a comment from the other.
Yep. Go back over the.
Ethan?
Yeah.
Yeah. I get the, the need, you know, why it's important, if I can see it go in both ways. That's why I'm kind of going on. But my golden standard is go off whatever department has, kind of per class and prefer. So.
I know we definitely don't have.
Yeah. You know, something I thought on Ethan's after hearing from highway super. Yeah, this could be waived, so.
Through the chair, totally understand the concern, but I also agree with the highway. They're the ones that have to do it. They're the ones that face with that challenge.
Who's Preston?
Did you want my opinion on?
Yeah, or you?
I was now thinking. What's the question?
Ethan, for, or its own parcel for the tension clause.
Oh, no, I think it should be a separate parcel. Yeah, I see both sides, they can be waived, so.
Yeah, it's a fifty-fifty, is it?
Yeah.
It's a toss-up, but, I mean.
I just don't want it to be a hard pass, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I haven't figured back on how we super can move ways in or out.
Agreed. All right, we'll keep that.
So many things that are so difficult on the highway.
And I didn't wanna try to close this out, but I thought of the sidewalks, and might as well just get that, you know, try to get some, something good for us to work on.
All right. So, one concern that I have with this is I'm not gonna be at our next one. So, we want to continue this to the March twenty-sixth meeting, but I can say that.
Yeah, I.
Will it make tell me?
This is have to go to town.
Oh, this one not gonna have to.
Yeah, we could stretch this.
This one is ours, yeah, sorry.
But get some final resolution. You know, get rid of all those colors, and then all black and white.
Yeah, I mean, and I'd like to know a little bit more.
But, yeah, but, yeah, want to approve everything.
Materialization.
Yeah.
I think, I think everything looks good.
I know the fiber, concrete, with wire mesh, definitely.
Gold.
The correct way to go, I'd say. It's not maybe cheaper, but it's the correct way. To make it last.
How many inches would it take?
I was saying four.
I think that's usual, that's pretty standard.
Yeah, usually that's.
You don't want to drive near, get a little wet.
Right, yeah.
Yes.
I mean, the way the state might say more, I don't know, but I would say at least four.
It was a good number, I think.
Yeah.
Did you have another, I'm sorry, almost raised?
I feel bad making people stay late. Just a couple of questions. Is there anything about the names of the streets or the neighborhoods that have to be approved by the town?
No, the, when they suggest the names, it goes to the town clerk's office, and then the town clerk has to determine if it's a similar name to another road in town. That's kind of the process that they follow, and they select a road name prior to the endorsement of the plan, usually. But it's not part of subdivision rights, it's something that they have to do through the town clerk. And I think the postmaster also has to be in on that, because it has to be similar. Can't be like Woodland Road and Woodland Drive, and you can't have two of those. So, it has to go through the town clerk, and I think the postmaster has to stay on that.
For the assessors.
Right, yeah, agreed.
And then, I did see on another couple of towns, they specified where there are more than ten dwellings. They require an impact study regarding utilities, schools, traffic, and emergency services. I can also type all this up and just put links, so that it's, I don't annoy people in person.
So, that'd be great. If you could send me whatever you got, I'd appreciate that.
Would that, would that fall into the peer review? An impact study?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know it's, I know it's forty B.
No. Can you? Yes.
Sorry.
Come on here. We're here for you, so.
Sorry. So, another thing that, my mom serves on a town board in New Hampshire, and I was talking to her, and she was like, oh, it's so great, you're getting more experience. And she had mentioned that they're looking at, saying that, like, putting a time limit, like, if a lot sells, they can't turn around and sell it again for, like, uninflated price for however many years.
I don't think we can control the lots. The purpose of a subdivision is control roadway, and once the lots are released, that's a responsibility of the owners.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't know that works in New Hampshire, but it's something else we can do here.
Sure.
Once the lots are released, they're completely out of our control.
Okay. And I think the lots are gonna sell from market, whatever happens in the market anyway.
You know, if it's like a private development, if it's a homeowner association, they want to put rules in or make it away, you can't stop them from doing that, but individuals think about homes on the lot release, whether it can go or not.
All right. Yeah, if you have any thoughts or recommendations, send them over to Mr. Benoit, and he can kind of look forward to it, to call it out to us, and bring it up, and.
Two meetings.
Yeah.
Not next meeting, yes.
Yeah, so with that, I'll detain the motion to continue the public hearing to March twenty, what, twenty-sixth?
Yeah.
Seven PM. Leave any questions, second Mr. Preston, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. That is. All right. All right, going back to the top, A Alpha Master Plan.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met last Wednesday. We received the completed survey results. We had just shy of nine hundred people participating. I think that was the second in the, several mass.
Here, again.
Second highest response. So, we did receive the survey, and I believe that's available. Do you want to take a look at it now?
I want to.
Okay. We'd like to take a look at that. We did do a town tour, I believe it was February third, that, to represent the CMRPC, spoke with department heads, and we toured town departments, and it was, it was interesting and eye-opening. And I believe, are we gonna have written results with that? We got a verbal sort of report from CMRPC. I don't think that was documented.
Big sample.
Maybe we could ask them to, because I think board members would be interested in sharing some of the results. It was really eye-opening, some of the town departments. We went to the highway department, fire department, police department, and town park, spoke to quite a few people. In terms of capital investment, I think there's kind of works ahead of us, especially with the highway department, but there are works in the process, right, a lot of piece of land, as a proposed building, I suppose. And it really don't have any room in there. I don't know if you've been in there. It's a maze. I don't know how to get the equipment in there to get in there. And some of the equipment is outside, but that's not good for the equipment, so they're hoping for a larger facility. Fire department has a mix of both new and old equipment. They have two pump trucks, one is about twenty years old, and fire chief was telling us that it's a million dollars plus now to get that new truck. So, it's expensive, but of course, it's a matter of publicity, so. But if we can get some details on that tomorrow, I'll share that with you. And next meeting is March nineteenth, I believe. Is that correct, Matt?
Third one.
Yeah.
Did you have any updates from that, Matt?
No.
All right. E, subcommittee of stormwater regulations, possible votes.
So, at the selection meeting the other night, the select board, did they vote to put it on the warrant? One thing that they, that our committee member asked was that if the committee could continue to work on our regulations. So, there's the bylaw, and then there's the regulations for the planning board. So, they asked if, um, they should create a subcommittee to, out of the members of the stakeholder committee, the subcommittee of the planning board, so they can keep working on our regulations. Stakeholder committee's charged us to work on the bylaw in the bylaw month. The subsequent regulations need to be in place if, in fact, the bylaw asks, within like a month or so, right? So, I guess the question is, does the planning board, I think we should create a motion to, create a subcommittee, a stormwater subcommittee, to help us with our regulations.
Yeah, and.
They've already started working on it a little bit during their public hearings, so I don't think it's a whole lot that needs to be done, but there's definitely support on that.
Yeah, and it's not like they're writing it, they're gonna draft it and recommend it to us, and it's our decision, but if.
Agreed.
And that board seemed like they're very eager to get their hands on it, so. Any help that, I think personally, any help that they can bring to the table, that was a very well-rounded and knowledgeable group of people.
I do have a draft charge. I wasn't able to get it ready for the thing. I did.
Stormwater. The committee hasn't been disbanded, like it was talked about. The selectmen decided to keep it there in case something comes up, so that it doesn't have to be reformed until it's all approved at town meeting. They're keeping the stakeholders committee, well, not meeting, but they're keeping it alive and active. And then, like you said, somebody brought up, we had started on it, but we ran out of time, we go by law, but see, there's a, the board breaks it all up from scratch to what started, or they finish it all up and then present it to the board. And that's what this is all about.
Yeah. If that board, if that committee wants to stay together and work on it, I'll have it done.
So, that'd be created with a new committee name as a subcommittee of this board. I do have a charge, I pulled it up on the screen, I could read it if you'd like. I mean, stormwater committees formed a subcommittee of the planning board, must comply with the meetings act, provide staff for presidents, staff provide support, most likely in a manner more focused, provided, and typical for our various boards. Charges providing the committee an overview of act of protection zoning and weapons protection measures already in place in order to provide context for, that's what the bylaw. MS four compliance, that a bylaw be in place, the bylaw is on the warrant for spring town meeting, bylaw calls for stormwater, firm, the granting authority, planning board to create regulations under article four, four B, stormwater management manual, article twelve, section four, C. So, there's two things, there's regulations, and then there's a manual. Manual, we haven't even started yet, so that there's two things. Committee wishes to make recommendations to the planning board on such matters, they may choose to do so, but advisory purposes of this committee primarily to arrive at documents that meet federal requirements under the bylaw, but also that the town feels is reasonable. Task of the committee is to review the stormwater management regulations draft, posed by MS four consultant in detail, and to work with the MS four consultant to create a draft manual. Those items raise concerns, as well as any issues committee members feel could be improved or which need to be added and listed. Staff will support the committee by researching and addressing each item in turn and any follow-up questions the committee may have. Required edits will be submitted to the committee for review before vetted, before being vetted with town council. The objective is to have new stormwater regulations in place immediately following annual town meeting in May twenty twenty-five. Assuming the board will review the draft before sending, sending, or scheduling. A public hearing to accept the regulations, this charge must be completed by June of twenty twenty-five. Charge for creating an updated manual must be completed by September.
And like subdivision, those are our rules, they don't have to go back to town meeting.
Right.
So, yeah, I think that's a good way to be.
The bylaw has time to meet, and this is all strictly funded.
So, I think, yeah, that committee would be great to help meet timelines and get it done.
Now, through the chair, Matt, how would that be done? Would verbiage say the same committee members of the stakeholders will be transferred to this committee?
I don't think we have to say who the members are, particularly just to form the actual committee.
I don't know, I don't know. I'm just asking, I was throwing it out there.
This is how the stakeholder committee was, and we just asked for volunteers, we'll probably just reach out to that committee, we'll probably get our forum like that.
Yeah.
Or does the planning board request the same committee continue working on?
We can.
That way they, you know, I don't know how that verbiage.
I wouldn't lock it into that, just in case, say, Les doesn't want to do it anymore. You know what I'm just saying?
Yeah, true.
Just so it's not locked into like, you, certain people I do want to, but. it, but.
So we'd be looking for a motion to form a subcommittee, known as stormwater committee, to help work on the planning board regulations and the manual as per the charge, uh, right here this evening, yes.
We have Mr. Preston, second Mr. Gennatic, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So we could put on the website vacancies, and we'll also, and we'll just try to get, what do we have, seven? And then my question was seven, you never showed up.
I think so.
Yeah, so there's seven, we'll advertise for vacancies on the website.
Yeah, because I think we had seven, not really, we have four, but sometimes you put a show on.
Yeah, that is a needs from different, different parts of town, so I'll think. So I'll reach out to them, see if they're willing to be part of it, if anyone wants to sign up, we'll get them on board, and since the committee's formed, then we'll schedule a meeting.
Sound good. Upcoming training opportunities, CPTC annual conference, March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, brief on this during training, Ms. Benoit?
Yep, so, uh, a little more information on this, this is March fifteenth, starts at eight o'clock, registration is ninety-five dollars per person, so, I mean, these are, these are really good, I mean, I think it's Saturday, right?
Fourteenth is Saturday? Fifteenth.
Fifteenth, sorry. Yeah, so this is Saturday, I mean, I know we're all busy folks, but I think it's, they're really good events, and you learn a lot from a lot of these presenters. There's breakfast, there's lunch, you can't go wrong, you mean ninety-five dollars plus. Some of the sections, roles and responsibilities of planning and zoning boards, we've already had that training. The second one is creating master plans, that's one of the ones to be signed up. If we get enough members to go to that, then we don't have to hold the actual training goes that are interested at this meeting, we could probably get the less, ninety-five dollars a person, we have five hundred available for this training. I doubt everyone's going to sign up for this, even if we get four, great, get four or five folks, great.
I probably would go, but I cannot go that date. I'm going to be prepping my house for mayhem to come the next day, so.
All right. Well, before I continue, who might be interested in this? Interested, not available, that, unfortunately.
All, all I got, I can't answer that, get it, man, yeah.
Going to the hospital on Sunday for a baby, so fifteen is another question for me.
Get the ultimate house.
So, I mean, would the board be all right if we send, if, if certain members are able to attend this, that we use our expenses for some of the trainings that we're supposed to have for the attendees who attend this instead?
Yeah, someone else, you know, I'm fine with that, we've, we've done a lot of trainings too, so if we have to push something to next year.
We have pledged for three more, we have fifteen hundred. So, I mean, one of them is not on yet, so we'll probably still have that one.
Yeah, someone's, I think that's, if we have to cut one class and maybe do it another time, we, we've done a lot of trainings, so.
Yeah.
It's been good too, I mean, there's been a couple, a couple things that have showed up.
I would say just if people go though, that they come back and just give an overview of what they.
You have two supplies.
Learned, yeah.
I'm really interested, it's called how not to hold a public hearing. If we attend a meeting in the town of Danbury, ZVA, as it considers a special permit application, and join a post-war discussion of what the board did wrong or right during the hearing, and how we can improve the public hearing process. I would put it down under the microchip. That's pretty good. So I think that would be really exciting.
It sounds like a fictitious scenario.
I don't know, is Danbury real?
No, I don't know the Danbury, no.
It's stuff for Danburs to put together. Oh, there you go. All right, um, there's also a chapter called what's new with ADUs. That one is led by Catherine O'Neil, A D F, A D U housing coordinator. Morning session subdivision surety, that's pretty good. Use of design review. Planning boards, zoning boards, need to have conservation and weapons laws. Community one stop, and then the afternoon session, well, Mitchell's hosting, writing reasonable offensive decisions, site plan review, which is the other one we signed up for, regional approaches to social preservation, and drafting effective R and P, I might do that one, because I gotta do some of those. Which support home rule legislation, there's a lot of them, but it goes throughout the day, they're, they're really good events, you learn a lot, you network with a lot of folks, so. I'd say that work in planning is long, but these are just.
Especially if they provide.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, if anyone's interested, reach out to Mr. Benoit.
Yeah, registration ends, uh, this is the last day of registration. It's probably by the end of the month, so, you know, slow it off.
All right. Any updates since, I don't know, you said you didn't have any when we talked earlier, but.
No, I didn't, but is Legacy Circle still on here? This is part of Legacy Circle. So residents just came in prior to our meeting, telling me that they're installing the overhead utility wires on the property. You don't even think those are part of the subdivision plan, they're selling utility wires. So when and if, it just said that they're an ISO, that maybe they were supposed to be underground, I don't even think we regulated it, because it wasn't any utilities approached as part of the subdivision plan, because it weren't the buildings. Right. So this is one of those opportunities where if we had underground requires, then we could make it happen with this, 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 it's just something for us to look at, I think it was just a stat lawyer, I think we could do.
Yeah, it just came in, so.
Yeah. No updates from any other projects, so no news is typically good news. I know two eighty-six west street has started their clearing, create their property. Yep. White residence board on for the warrant, Sleepy Hollow, and William Drive is not on here, but. Haven't heard anything about Evergreen Estates, that's the one off Thomas Circle on South, South Street. I don't know what's going on with that, that might be something that we have to rescind. No, there's a lane at Hunts Pond, that might be something we have to rescind as well. So, I mean, these things are just so long gone.
Yeah.
What are you supposed to do? I mean, Lane and Hunts hasn't even built a road, Thomas Circle did build all of the infrastructure, they just haven't done any of the house at all, which is kind of weird, kind of weird in between now. Mentioned Douglas package stores supply of building permits, so that's good. Yep. No waiver welding, so we're going right along, otherwise, I don't think they have any other updates.
Okay. And we have, uh, from additional business, zoning board, ZVA applications.
Yes.
For March two thousand twenty-five comments.
Through the chair, I have one question. Deep Road yet, that house under construction.
Yeah.
It's just supposed to build with all that and stuff, to keep that soil running around.
Yeah, that's, that's part of the design, yeah. They haven't even finished starting the house, it's still, still skeleton.
Right, I mean, I thought all the time that was to get it done, to prevent any issues. Anybody know when to find out what's going on, is that what's the worst anymore than I guess?
I can find out, it's still under a special permit, so.
Well, that's what I mean, I thought that was discussed in heavily, even with Davis, and now it's just there, it's kind of like. And it isn't like it was just a week ago, that was what, last summer? I think it was quite a while ago.
So we'll take, we'll take that, this is working under the, less than forty-eight hours, you saw it driving up here. Okay. All right, ZVA applications, uh, four, five, Lindbergh, Lindbergh out. Ronald and Gail LaBelle.
Yeah, I think they're building a deck on the back of their house, and it's inside the suburbs.
Constructing a sunroom on a single-family on a pre-existing non-conformant lot.
Conservation commission argues that the company could be on that, they. So.
Board, any questions, concerns? Stamp that. ZVA application twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five dash two, one twenty-five Ledstone, Jacob and Megan Galanias, amended special permit, constructing an eight-by-twenty-eight deck to the front side of a single-family home on a pre-existing non-conformant lot.
So in order nature, just on that, in order conditions, I think they have to amend that with the, I think that's a letter of order, yeah, I think they have to do something on conservation, because they have a letter of order, but, yeah, I would just say that all, put a deck on it.
And two thousand twenty-five dash three, three Huff Road, Stephen Flag remanded special permit, construct a single-family home on a pre-existing non-conformant lot, previously filed under case two thousand twenty-three dash seventeen and denied. The outcome of the litigation, Land Court has remanded that the application, uh, back to the board under civil action number twenty-four, miscellaneous zero 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 one six four.
So, I don't know what the application is, but. No, the. Tell you what's here.
The concomitant is okay with ZVA submission, uh, that's from two thousand twenty-three. He does not share, I don't know if he's. That's Huff Road side. This is off of Parker Road off Book Street.
I know where you're at. They down on the lake?
Yeah. Yep.
Think this was, I think it's this, is that it?
One 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 dash four four.
That's a parcel number. Ultimately, this was like a trailer, that house was built over it. This is a really odd situation that would be litigation, we need to go along. I think the application now is, I, I, I don't know if we won or what's going on, but I think they have to.
Land Court has remanded the application back to the board under civil action.
Now it's a hammer it up.
So they have to work it out, try to figure out if they can do this or not. I just, I just don't know if the planning board's going to have the insight on this because it's a residence, right? Who typically have the insight on residences?
I'd like to just know what the, what the relief they're looking for, if you know what that is.
Reconstructing this non-conformant home, building home would be an overall increase to the footprint, current home, existing zero foot setback along former Parker Road, with six feet, so they had a lot of setback issues with this.
But it seems that whole area is that way.
Right. Issues reconstruction, not these substantially more detriment of the neighborhood than existing home. Project result in a modern home, refreshed property that reduces, that reduces pre-existing non-conformity.
So reduces?
Yeah. Construction home will improve the aesthetics and may help decrease property values in the neighborhood.
See it around the legs now, they're taking down the old sauna cabinets that were just a sauna cabinet, and they're filling it up with the scrub round, Lake Manchur, you see it, all the lots, I mean, they're doing it. What's that, Parker Road? Because there is one. So about a king's campground, head up.
I think it's this structure here.
There, you know, it's that, like, so.
Right.
I don't see where it started.
Right, I'm, I'm over here.
Those roads are a maze.
And then I, yeah, I don't know, I think that's, that's the house. Reconstructing that, putting it in this place, we're close to it, the house, so it's like that's to be raised, if not, existing house that property to be demolished.
Big garage.
Yeah, it's a pretty big structure, a house, I'm not so, so short in comparison to the neighborhood, but that's not really our call to make, it's really on the CBA, it's a special permitting authority.
I think there's an area there, I'll check out, no comment on this action.
Yeah, I'll write that in, maybe.
Through the chair, is it was pre-existing non-conformant lot? Yep. How are they non-conforming, is it over all size or?
Is it down on the lake, Lake Manchur, a little cabin, a little lot.
Size is the most likely setbacks.
So the guy from, who knows, the fifties, an old trailer was there, or whatever, built around that, they want to tear it down and call the house, so it's an unperformed lot, but lots of type like that, since the beginning of time.
When, when's their hearing for that?
It's Wednesday, the, the first Wednesday is actually before us.
I, I can put it impartial. I'd like to, I want to see more to really weigh in on this one, but.
So we don't know if, before that, if they had a bigger house, or something, it's had a little bit smaller, go back, and try it again, we don't know any of that, I think to this.
Needed a super majority vote, but they only got a three of five, needed a four of five.
Yeah, no, I'll just put, we just didn't have time to rese, you know, we would want more research to, you know, give a positive or a negative. That's what we're pushing now, our time limit here.
I mean, it seems like no law proven for setbacks. Starting to get rid, getting rid of that mobile trailer with a roof over it, I think that's kind of what the board wanted in the first place, but I don't know how we feel about it, I mean, they're reducing setbacks overall, there wasn't a. setbacks overall, there was an encroachment in the previous property, and now they're getting rid of the encroachment entirely, slow process.
Yeah. I know, Paul, that's, like I said, I know they're doing it all, all around, whether it's good or bad, I don't know, but.
And ultimately, it's up to the ZBA, based on their public hearing and comments from the neighbors, so, really, just really deferring to that.
Talks on the neighbors, yeah.
Um. No, yeah, no opinion, no, all right, we'll do that. All right, meeting minutes. January twenty-ninth, possible votes, was this one we had a lot of, little, little stuff on?
Public hearing for, and for data, this already, what was the, we issued the decision. That fifth period has since passed and appeals. Seventy-six, folks.
Seventy-six, oh.
Isn't that, I think that was just a notice that land was being converted out of sixty-one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't understand the comment, the note there, edits need to be made to the current plan, I don't understand that, I don't think we needed edits. Maybe it's anticipating the A and R was coming?
Could have been.
Well, it's not coming back to the board.
Right, let's see.
Or maybe this was when they first brought it, you said that they just needed to make some changes to the plan.
Yeah, to the draft A and R plan, say.
And it did come back, and it was just, it was a simple notice with town family, so.
Yeah, I'm gonna say, edits need to be made to the draft A and R plan. It's just for a clarity.
Yeah, this is one we had a lot of little comments on, I see, they changed, Mr. Ferro, the highway supplement, fix the car road. Yeah, Teresa's name was fixed. Yeah, this is one we got a lot of bits on.
Gotcha, okay. Yeah, just, just that one there.
And the blue wave, that was, that was an electrical connection too, so that was fixed.
Yeah.
Long Lake.
Yeah. Right.
All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to accept the meeting minutes for January twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five, with, uh, one correction.
Yeah.
Okay, as amended. Eva, Mrs. Genotic.
Second.
Second, Mr. Preston, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All set. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
The vote?
Second.
Eva, Mrs. Wickers, and Mr. Greco, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.